Call meeting to order. Today is September the 19th, 2011. Calling the BUHS Board Meeting to Order. First item on the agenda that I'd like to do to pull a little bit out of order is, is there some new faces around the table? And I'd like the administrators, if they would please, to introduce them.
Sure.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes. I'd like to start at the far end of the table and introduce Mr. Chris Day. Chris Day joins us from BAMS and he is our new, one of our new system principals. He'll be working with students in the Purple House, which is letters A through K. Next to him is Andrew Haas. Mr. Haas comes to us from Gardner, Mass. And he is going to work with the White House. He's always wanted to be in charge of the White House, and now he is. And he'll be working with letters L through Z. And finally, I'd like to introduce Ms. Kate Margitis, our new Dean of Students, who comes to us from Anadok Regional High School. And she is working with students A through Z and...
A through Z.
And our smooth opening really...
What about the numbers?
Right.
Zeros through nines?
In our smooth opening, I attribute a lot to them. They've been very enthusiastic. They've come into a difficult situation, having a whole new administrative team, have hit the ground running, and I'm really grateful for all we've done and will continue to do.
Great, thank you. Thank you. So, a little bit of a change in the agenda this evening. As the board members know, as has been reported in the public, that this is going to be my last meeting. I have submitted my resignation to the board and I'm moving on. I'd like to just read a short statement. And then what I'd like to do is to turn over the gavel to the Vice Chair to continue conducting the meeting. And I'll sit here and coach as I need to. So, tonight is really not about me and my resignation. It is about passing the baton to a new board, new board leadership, and moving into the future. It is about my hopes and desires that the work already done by this board, its administration, and our teachers be continued and expanded. And that the confidence, trust, and credibility that this board has earned also continues and carries forward well into the future. It's my hope that my fellow board members continue to focus on the quality of our education experience, match to a level of funding that the taxpayers can afford. Within these walls, we've produced some really great students, excellent graduates, including three of my own children. And I'm sure that our schools are going to continue to produce many more graduates we can all be proud of. I'd like to personally thank the voters for the opportunity to serve, and my fellow board members for letting me serve as your Chair and the Chair of the Finance Committee. While the board frequently has more opinions than people, and we share them liberally and literally, when the day is done and the decisions are made, we speak with one voice, united in our solidarity to get our job done. And so while I leave this nest of eleven years and move on to what will hopefully be bigger and better things, I will, like many of our students, look back on this experience with fondness in my heart and a smile on my face. And I'd like to say thank you to everyone here for helping me do that. You were all a very important part of that process. I think there's an outstanding team here and a very high-functioning board. So with that, I'm going to turn the gavel over to the Vice Chair, Mr. Bob Woodward. Thank you.
Can't see me crying on camera. Preempt Ron, just a little bit, make a couple of comments myself. Before I forget it, I just want to say that the reason that there is more opinions than people is because you usually had two.
True.
Opinion A and opinion B. And if we didn't, you know, we didn't understand opinion A, then you'd give us opinion B. I've served with David for, I was trying to think, I don't know how many, it's probably five or six years now. And that's always, I've always thought that that was one of the keys to this board operating smoothly, was the fact that we had a very diverse group of people with leanings from one end of the spectrum to the other. And yet, at the end of the day, we were able to work out a unified position and walk out of the room all friends. And that's a sign of leadership, for sure. We certainly wish David the best. He's done a lot for the board, seen through the construction and a lot of waters over the dam in, what, ten, ten years?
Ten, eleven years, yeah. Clea, we did Clea, we did, yeah. The mascot issue.
Oh, yeah. There was, there were a lot of things.
And ten budgets that all got passed on the first vote?
Yeah, that's true. So, great job.
Thank you.
I'm going to miss you and best of luck in Pennsylvania where they throw the cow over the fence some hay.
Oh, I thought you just tipped them at night.
Oh, maybe you do.
Thank you.
Ron?
Yeah.
We'd like to acknowledge your work, David, and in recognition and appreciation of your dedication to the students and families of Brattleburg Union High School District Six during ten and one-half years of service on the board, school directors, and eight and one-half years as Board Chair. Signed by myself and Jim Kane.
Thank you.
I don't want to forget, too, at the appropriate time, we have a little celebratory cake there in your honor.
Thank you.
So we want to get into that soon. I just wanted to outline the process in terms of replacing the Board Chair. So Bob Woodward, as Vice Chair, will assume the role tonight. And then at a future meeting, and this could be your next meeting, that you would have nominations, formal nominations, for Board Chair and Vice Chair. There are some committees that David had served on that Bob actually had been essentially co-assigned, so some of those will be all in place. We probably will need another Finance Committee member, so that's probably the most immediate thing that board members should think about, their willingness to be on the Finance Committee. And then in terms of the new board member, the Brattleburg Town School District will advertise the opening since it's a Brattleburg position, and then they will make the appointment by statute. So, we will get that advertisement in place, and then we will see interested members of the community that would like to serve on the BUHS Board. Okay?
Okay. Well, be gentle with me. It's my first time, do the best you can. I've got a couple of coaches here around me, right? So we can move on into the agenda. And the next item is the Clerk's Report. And item A under that would be the approval of minutes. However, we have not yet received the minutes for review. They have been done and approved, but I don't believe that most board members have seen them yet. So, we should defer that to our next meeting to approve those minutes. Are there any communications to the board? Did you get any last minute?
No, I got a couple of thank yous, yeah.
A couple of thank yous, well, that's good. Anybody else? Okay, I have, I have none. Is there anything else for the Clerk's Report? If not, is there a motion? We do that, right? Accept the Clerk's Report officially. Is there a motion to accept the Clerk's Report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Russ, seconded by Ricky. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Was there anyone? Well, we didn't have the minutes, so it doesn't matter if you weren't at the meeting to approve the minutes, so, okay, unanimous. Recognition of groups of individuals. I believe we've introduced the new people at the table, and we have the WTSA and the reformer represented. Great to see you guys. Okay, I guess we would move into consent agenda. Is there a motion to hear consent agenda?
Second.
Second?
I second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Or in consent. First report is finance, building, and transportation. And that will be meet. The Finance Committee met on September 7th, and we approved some warrants and some payrolls. The warrants were, I list here somewhere, numbers 1035, 1037, and 38, and 41 through 43. In total, $67,222.57. And in addition to that, we approved payrolls. And there are, on your warning for the meeting, there are several payrolls, some of which we had already previously approved and reported on. What we did at this meeting, approved payrolls for August 12th, the amount of $422,497.78, and August 26th, in the amount of $476,306.19. In addition to that, we had a short discussion on capital plan. Our intention in finance is to propose a five-year capital plan, so that when, as we get into budgeting, we have a little better look down the road at what we need. The new facility has got a few years on it now. There's technology needs, there's things that we're going to have to pony up and do.
The roof?
Yeah. We always create a reserve.
Yes, Roof and Boiler Fund, it used to be called.
The Messerschmitt Boilers.
Messerschmitt. Yeah. So, we, and we're still in the process of discussing that, how to go about it. And obviously, everything would be brought to the board and keep you informed. We will talk about it at our next finance meeting, which is this Wednesday. We did have a brief executive session at the Finance Committee to kind of start the ball rolling on the philosophy, I guess, as we get into negotiations for a contract this year. So that's the basis of that meeting, and our next meeting will be this Wednesday at 7:45 in the central office.
Could I ask, Bob, your typical BUHS Finance Committee meetings will be usually on a Wednesday morning?
We have.
And how, I'm asking this just in terms of any other board member that would like to join that committee, give them a sense of the frequency. Typically, you meet every...
Twice, twice a month typically. And we have settled on 7:45 because it seems to be a time that worked for the present members. That's not to say that absolutely has to be at that time. And we typically meet with Jim Kane and occasionally have administrators for various topics. It's not a, an overwhelming responsibility. You do have, every, before every meeting, Jim issues the payment, the warrants, and the payrolls, and you need to look those over, and we ask questions at finance. And then we are the, kind of the lead for the budgeting process, although all board members are cordially invited to attend all the many budget sessions which will start next month. So that's the basis of the Finance Committee, and I'm sure we can, we could probably flex things a little bit time-wise around somebody that wanted to join but might have a little bit of an issue with the meeting time.
What did you meet at, central office or somewhere here? Central office.
So I would just ask you to think about that as you think about next meeting, if somebody that might be interested in serving.
And the remaining incumbents are Scott, Ruth, and myself. Next would be planning and policy.
Well, planning and policy inadvertently met today. We had a bit of a scheduling mix-up. We weren't actually supposed to have a meeting today, but it got warned on the agenda. So, we met, we discussed scheduling and general housekeeping. We will be meeting before the next meeting, and we will be warning several policies for that that was supposed to be.
Thank you. KCC?
We met earlier this evening, and we sat down with Andy Haas, who's the new administrator working with us. And we talked about last, some of last year's 1 percent funds and developed a schedule of getting reports from the faculty members that did those 1 percent reports to report back to us to how those went and what happened and how's it going, and started to create that schedule for the year, how that's going to look, and who we're going to hear from and when.
Thank you. BAMS Committee?
BAMS Committee, we met last week. We had, I think, a really great report from, about technology in the school with the faculty who take, who's half-time teaching and half-time working with the other faculty members related to using technology in different ways in their classrooms. So it was, it was a really interesting presentation, I think, that really helped us to understand how BAMS is moving forward with technology for everybody in the school, not just the students, but also the other faculty members, so everybody can be working on things together. So it was a great meeting.
Okay, thank you. WRCC? We haven't met since the last time, have we?
We have advisory tomorrow.
Yes, the regional RAB will meet tomorrow at noon here.
Noon right here, yeah.
Okay, that's, I believe that's it, committee reports. And that would be it for consent agenda. So, yep, we need to have a motion to approve consent agenda as reported.
So moved.
Sorry, Keith and Ian. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Unanimous. We move into administrative reports. This is where Board Chair gets his one real privilege, he can move around all over the place, pick whoever he likes.
Well, actually, Woody's given my report already. The biggest news would be that we have our regional advisory board meeting tomorrow at noon here in the room.
How is the, how are things working out for, in terms of the sending schools, getting people here with all the flood issues?
As far as I know, they're all here now, certainly the second...
They're still here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, once they came in, we tied them up and wouldn't let them go. But no, the, most of the road issues have been fixed. There's certainly some, there are some students traveling in a lot of convoluted ways of getting places, but they're coming to school, so, which is a good thing.
I understand that some of them did take quite a while, the first couple of days.
Yes.
But that's a testament to their desire to be here.
They wanted to be here, yes.
Great. Okay, Ingrid, BAMS?
Ingrid, Ingrid, who else?
Make sure you pronounce it correctly, Mr. Woodward.
What was the new name? BAMS or Ingrid.
Dr. Staley, I will leave that.
There's a rumor out here about a state board regulation changing naming that had to be consistent with the union high school. So, Brattleburg Union High School and middle school. And apparently, 40 years ago, somebody had the hindsight, the good sense to call it Brattleburg Area Middle School, as opposed to Brattleburg Union Middle School. You know what that means?
But it would have made the mascot choice easier.
Steve was grooming the cheering squad to advise that, so that is just a rumor, so we're going to turn it over to the BAMS.
You need to repeat that. She went way out. Thank you for that, Dr. Staley. It would have been a very quick resignation. Well, just a few things here. Team Draco took its three-day field trip to Ascutney last week. This is the trip you approved a couple weeks ago. It was a very successful trip despite the rain and cold, but they came back Friday exhausted but very happy. All went well there. The newsletter was sent out last week, I don't know if you've received it yet. Yes, it has reached, okay, it should be reaching the board members' mailboxes soon, if not yet. I know it will be. We've had a great opening so far. Our kids have really been amazing, truly. I mean, every year I feel that, but there's something very special about this year's opening, despite the challenges, you know, that have gone around environmentally around us. But they've been terrific, really. Our BEAMS program started up again today. This is our fourth year for BEAMS, and today it began. I'm not quite sure what the enrollment is, but I think it's nearly 100 students involved in BEAMS this cycle. And we have about 75 students involved in athletics. So we have a lot of kids doing wonderful things after school. The Young Writers Program, when I came in earlier, I heard somebody talking about Facebook and trying to help kids use proper English, standard American English. Well, we have a new, it was new to us last year, but this, last year we had two teachers involved with the Young Writers Program. This year we have 17 teachers who've signed on, and that includes every core subject, English, math, science, social studies, special educators, academic support teachers, the entire English department, almost all of the social studies department, three math teachers, exploratory teachers. This is a program that Jeff Gervalt started several years ago, and at one point in his career, not too long ago, he was managing editor of the Burlington Free Press, and he wrote a grant to initiate this electronic writing program for kids, and he was successful in that. It allows our kids to write, to have their writing be edited by peers, to have their writing be commented on by peers. And because of it, the two teachers who did it last year, the volume of writing that kids were doing was phenomenal. And their use of standard American English was improving. Even though it is electronic blog-like writing, they're using proper English, and the teachers are very excited. We've had one training so far done by a protege of Jeff Gervalt's who came down, and it's going to continue, the training. So it's, it's, I'm very excited about having it in the building. I think the quantity and the quality of our kids' writing will improve immensely because of it. And then we, we share this complex and assembly coming up on Wednesday. Are you going to talk about that?
You certainly may.
All right. Well, I think the two people behind this Civil War remembrance event are Bill Holliday and Joe Rivers, high school and middle school social studies teachers, and they've been working on this since last March and have done a phenomenal job putting together this remembrance of the largest mustering ground in Vermont during the Civil War. They've involved a lot of kids in it, middle school and high school both. Music will be playing with the American Legion Band. There's a series of slides that they'll be showing that have been narrated by kids, primary source slides of the time period. Very impressive, the work they've done. It's 10 o'clock Wednesday morning, and I written, we would invite everyone to try to come if you can. Program's supposed to last about 45 minutes, and it's right out front by the memorial rock out there. It was here when Tim went to school, when Woody went to school, when Ruth went to school, and anyone else who went to school there.
Where would people park?
We'll open the back of the student parking lot, probably, because that right now is gated off, but we'll open that. Other than that, along the street.
The church lot, you can just walk down outward. Supposed to be a nice day, actually, Wednesday, which is great.
And we've had several of our English teachers getting ready for this, have actually brought classes out to the monument and talked about mustering in and mustering out. So it's kind of been a neat educational opportunity for our, for our teachers to do. And our own Chris Day will also be a part of it as well, to be one of the speakers.
Sounds great.
Okay, thank you. We segue into, would it now be DAHS?
The Baaaaa!
I'm sorry, you've been the butt of the show.
Pass along to the man who asked a questionable judgment of passing his boss in a running race this Sunday, I understand.
It did take me 11 miles to pass him, though.
Actually, it was 13.25.
11 to pass you.
I think we're counting.
Excellent. So, last Thursday, we had about 300 families, parents at Open House. It was pretty well-attended, it was good to see some people that are here tonight were there. Our teachers were very grateful to have the opportunity to see parents and show off their programs. It was nice because as I walked through the hallways, I saw predominantly ninth and 10th grade parents, which is good to see that people wanted to see the school, if you'd never seen it before, so it was nice. We're actually getting ready for NCCAPs, hard to believe, they're coming up at the beginning of next month, so we've started the planning process for that. They'll be now going home to juniors, and their parents about, more about NCCAPs. Big news is BUHS TV came back on the air today with their first broadcast. They did an amazing job. It was nice to see, they looked a little nervous, but that rubbed off in the first couple of minutes, they were making jokes. One of our exchange students from Spain is one of our lead anchors, and it was great to see her out there doing that. And it's on VCT Channel 10, and it's also going to be on the web this year. So, wherever you are in the world, at 10:15 Eastern Standard Time, you can tune in and see.
Oh, wow, even Pennsylvania?
Even, even as far away as Pennsylvania. Wow.
Okay, thank you. Okay, will we be having student council?
They will be here. Yes.
Do we have new name tags? Probably just make sure, check, make sure we have the right ones for the students. How many exchange students do we have this year?
13, I believe.
That's great. How many students from here are out on exchange programs?
I don't know. I, I know three from the Purple House, I don't know from the others.
Do we, sorry, I'm off topic. Do we get, still get funding for the exchange students when we send them out? No? They go out?
They un-enroll.
They un-enroll, yeah.
Okay, central office?
Yeah, just a brief report. We have our next supervisory union meeting October 6th. It's a Thursday evening at 6:45, and that'll be at Oak Grove. And our current voting members are Ruth and Russ, and David Hasden, and maybe as Vice Chair, Vice Chair, what are you assuming the chair, come early anyway, maybe you could be available on October 6th at 6:45. And at your next meeting, if you, if any of the voting members know that they can't be there, somebody could be assigned for that meeting, if you can make it. So I'll remind you of that on October 4th. Where is it going to be? It's at Oak Grove? 6:45. And the only other thing I have is further down on the agenda, but I think we can just stick here for now, is authorization to borrow funds. This is the annual process that Jim Kane recommends, and there are two copies with signatures. So, $1.5, hopefully $1.6 million.
Is everyone familiar with this general process? Those of you who've been on the board would be. We usually give an authorization for the school year to borrow... We usually give an authorization for the school year to borrow. Revenue incoming is, doesn't always line up with expenses, and we occasionally have to do some borrowing. It's always at a very favorable rate, and we authorize it typically in early, the early part of the school year. Any questions, any questions on that process? I guess we should vote on it, right? Okay.
Need to vote to authorize the sign?
Authorize the chair to sign, right?
And then everybody signs it, too.
Yeah. To everybody to sign, okay, yeah, there are spots for everyone.
Whole Board has to.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize the Board to sign the authorization to borrow funds? So, Scott?
Second.
And Ruth? Any questions, comments? Okay, ready to vote? Then all in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Seeing none, it's passed, and we will sign it now. Anything else for Central Office? Nothing, I have nothing that's developed in the last 20 minutes.
Oh, are you sure? I thought we would reveal all the policies again.
We'd like to read them all. He will take care of that. I'm sure, he's probably committed to the memory, but I don't know.
He's great.
Okay, let's see. I guess I covered anything there? Is there any unfinished business? Nothing on the agenda. And new business? We have the authorization to borrow funds, and that's it, I believe, that I have on my list. Is there anything else for the good of the order? If not?
I move we adjourn.
We adjourn and start the massive cake party. Is there a motion? And I didn't say cake party.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Let's be clear on TV in particular. Okay, motion?
I think Ruth made it.
Ruth did?
I, I adjourn.
Rush, a second. All in favor?
Aye.